Michael Callahan's after Don.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Don Zerlop, District Four. In the 1990s, this city had the unfortunate experience of employing Bill Kirchhoff to be our city manager. His stated philosophy was that every city has a slum and that the pier and the harbor was his. Then deferred maintenance for many years, paving the way for the deterioration that exists today. Unfortunately, sometimes we're so close to situations that we cannot really see and judge things properly. This past weekend, I went out on a date with a woman who lived in Long Beach, grew up spending much of her time in her youth here in Redondo Beach, loved it. But she said to me that she won't come back here. She says it's just too scummy for her. She came, ate at Kincaid's six months ago, went into the restaurant, came out of the restaurant, wouldn't walk on the pier, wouldn't stay in town. The improvement that's necessary in our pier and harbor area is long overdue, and the time for you to move forward is now. Please, please, vote yes and move forward with this ALPith. Thank you.
Michael Callahan. Laura Zahn. And after Laura, my glass is out. Kim Brickley?
Yes.
Okay.
Laura Zahn, District Four. Stars or Strikes? Either the residents of Redondo Beach are about to experience three stars aligning, or they are about to experience three strikes and we're out of our regional resource beach area. The three stars aligning are: the residents of Redondo Beach now own all the leases on the 36-acre project site. It took many years and millions of our taxpayer dollars buying out the master leaseholders to accomplish this deal. The private AES site is for sale. Three, the exclusive development permit with Redondo Beach Waterfront LLC/Centracal ends tonight. This presents the residents of Redondo Beach an outstanding opportunity to create a full vision of over 94 acres of combined public and private land. Thus allowing a combined effort of developers and designers to create a true regional resource and asset for the residents of Redondo Beach and regional and foreign visitors. The three strikes would be: one, if the project continues forward as it exists now, the city is looking to enter into yet another lease scenario. This time, however, it is for 99 years. This 99-year lease will include the entire 36-acre project site along with private roads, private sidewalks, private bike paths. Two, if the two properties are developed separately, there will be double the cost of startup and a high propensity of overlap on the retail, entertainment, restaurant, hotel rooms. On the other hand, if the two properties were synced, the development intensity would be balanced. This would allow for the commercial, residential, retail, entertainment, hotel options to blend with each other and not be in competition. Keeping the current developer results in a non-ocean-oriented lifestyle center, Harbor Village, or whatever the flavor of the month this project is. Measure C says, "Keep our pier mall free." This development should say, "Keep our mall pier free." We, the residents of Redondo Beach, need a cooperative developer who is willing to design an ocean sport-focused project with exciting retail and passive recreational opportunities for all. We've heard the staff speak of a halo effect, a waterfall effect. I like Harbor Commissioners Callahan analogy, a golden cow pie effect.
Kim Brickley. And then after that, Matthew Utowitz?
Yes.
Okay, come on, get ready to come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity. I am in District Four. I'm a Redondo Beach homeowner and a mom of seven years. I was able to visit the 3D model today by accident. It's very impressive. Parts of it are lovely, parts of it are beautiful and very appealing. I'm in favor of renovation and improvement, for sure. However, 20% of the entire project is devoted to brick and mortar retail, which is in trouble. I give you the Wall Street Journal. Brick and mortar retail is having a lot of problems. Staples like Gap, Banana Republic, Chico's, many others are contracting, not expanding. The Limited is closing every single store this year. Who is going to be able to afford the rents of these retail places and maintain them profitably? Local businesses on the waterfront after that development? I doubt it. Furthermore, what impact will it have on existing retail that we already have nearby that may be doing well or may be just hanging on, but it's still local retail? Don't get me wrong, I love retail. I'm a costume designer of 30 years in Los Angeles. I get paid to shop. I get paid to buy luxury goods with other people's money all the time, and I'm really good at it. I've also done creative retail branding and trend casting, but I don't do it down at the beach. The wisdom of depending on brick and mortar retail to support 20% of such a large development right now, to me, is highly suspect. Retail trends are unlikely to reverse themselves anytime soon. And while I liked, really liked, many of the aspects of the development, I just don't see three stories of red brick all over that open space as an appealing thing to put there. If you can't see the beach, you're just in Redondo. You're not looking at Redondo Beach. Like I said, the future of retail shopping as a destination is in serious doubt, and that is not just my opinion. Given that travel and tourism is, right now, highly compromised at this time and could remain so for quite some time, is it really a wise business decision to place such a large bet on those two things? It seems risky to me right now at best. I'm not against the entire project at all, but it seems overkill, overbuilt, and like there could be a better solution within the waterfront design. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew, come on down. And next up is Erica Snow Robinson.
Matthew Utowitz, resident of Redondo Beach. I represent the Bowens Brigade Dogtown, Silicon Beach, and 140 of the Village, the neighbors of the waterfront. There is no need for a 9% or 10% hurdle rate. Typical rate for the risk based on a beachfront asset is 3% hurdle rate. It shouldn't be greater than 5% or 6% at most. It should be from profits, not gross revenues. I don't know what they have currently. City can charge 15% to 20% to businesses, therefore they can deduct 5% hurdle rate, and city earns the middle. Note, when the developer is getting the loan, Centracal only needs to have 10% to 20% of the total building costs. They would face a rate of interest on the loan of 3% to 5% in the current marketplace. They should only earn Centracal their preferred hurdle rate on their cash down payment in, not on the financed money. That's a bad deal. No one would take in their right mind. That is normal in business in Southern California and in Northern California development projects that I've worked on. Next, the building development at the waterfront should not be higher than 25-foot hot two-story development, not 60-to-80-foot buildings. They need more parks. Don't open the lagoon. Put in a water filtration system and increase the lagoon size. Development less than 20-foot around the lagoon in height, then parks, not driveway, then maximum 25-foot buildings. Push back development of the big market at the corner area beyond the boat launch and put the main boat launch there. Seals will take over an open beach if you open it. Close it and keep bathing water safe. Next, put in a Roman bathhouse similar to a plunge at the AES development site. It can hold 10,000 people for events. Can also put in three wave pools over there, plus residential developments of 1,500 units, mixed use, and a mix of hotels, condos, for rent, and timeshares. Centracal did not ever address the rusted old city water drain directly in front of the waterfront's ugly, black building, nor did their plan fix the parking structure in front of R10 underneath the park area. I am for development. I'm against over 25-foot-high any waterfront building. I'm against Centracal because this lease is no good.
Okay, thank you. Erica Snow Robinson. And next up is Chris Voisey.
Hi, Mayor, City Council. I'm just gonna keep it short and sweet. I do not share that particular version of things. I am for the waterfront. I really hope that, first of all, I applaud you all for mucking through all this mess. And I really hope and encourage you all to move forward with the process. It's gonna be enjoyed for generations to come, which I'm thrilled, since I do have two children, one old enough to party in Redondo and go there instead of Hermosa. And I hope you all move forward with it. I think that we have a real chance to become the jewel of the South Bay that we deserve to be. So, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Chris Voisey. And next up is John Buchi.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council again, and staff. Chris Voisey, District One. Like I said before, I'm very much in favor of this project moving forward. I think this is a really interesting project. I looked into the ground lease, that 99-year lease a lot of people had a problem with last time. Love the fact that we got rid of the options, moved things forward, and took those out of there so that we can move this forward. The ground leases are really an interesting thing. A lot of people don't understand them, they don't look at them. It's not like a normal house type of a lease in that you're making significant improvements to the property itself. We are benefiting as a community to the improvements that get made on this. I looked into it, it's actually kinda funny. The 99-year lease is used for the, for some residential down in the Irvine Company. All their land and the houses down there are actually all done on a 99-year lease. One of the reasons for that is it's the structures, how long they're anticipated to be around. So, I'm very much in favor of this again. I see a lot of government agencies, private institutions like universities and colleges, they do the same sort of thing with the ground leases. I think this looks like a great deal. I'm glad to hear the experts speaking out on it, giving the real uses of this property. And I do think that this will be an amazing thing for Redondo Beach.
Thank you, John Buchi. And Steve Bopp. Is John here? Okay. Steve Bopp, okay.
I thought my last name was Bopp. It can be Bob.
Yeah, well, I call you Steve.
Anyway, I'm a lifetime resident of this city. I was born in 1948. Saw downtown, it's gone now. I have vibrant pier, harbor. I'm all in favor of the new development. I looked at the plan, the model, I think it's terrific. It's a good shot in the arm for us. Hope you approve it. And before I leave, this is kinda off the record, I saw something on the internet where there was a blonde lady back here, did you see it? I don't know if any of you guys were watching the audience, but she was like moving this around.
Oh, last week?
Was it last week?
That was last, not tonight.
And then she, no, not tonight. Then she finally pulled her bra off and put another shirt on.
It was quite disturbing from this point of view.
It was on the internet, though, and it was the TV camera up here pointing that.
Yes, we, thank you.
But thank you all. Have a good evening.
I think all of our phones lit up for a while, our emails. I think she moved to San Pedro, is what I saw. It's true. David Deemer? Demice? David? Okay. I gotta write one of these weeks.
David Deemer, 17-year resident in District Two. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is the third time I've come up here, and I'm hoping it's gonna be the last. It's been an interesting and an informative process. I want to particularly thank the staff and that group for really being able to articulate and be responsive and speak to how the process works and the whatnot. That's very, very important for folks like us. But it's not my voice that I want you guys to hear. I want you guys to pay particularly attention to the voice of the youth. So, in particular, that young man that came up earlier, who talked about not only himself, but his peers wanting to be part of a vibrant community. And having said that, then obviously I'm in support of the alpha and for you folks to be able to recognize that they'll never have a perfect project, that there's gonna need to be compromises in order for this to move forward. So, please vote in favor of the alpha, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Dan Elder. And then Penny Wirsing after that.
Dan Elder, District Five. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members, staff. I know you've all put a lot of time and energy into this. I thank you for your diligence. Hopefully you won't be here too late tonight, but I'll make this short for you. I think most people in this room would agree that our waterfront needs a lot of help. We're kind of at the stage where we've got the Route 66 of waterfronts, and not in its heyday, it's well past its prime, rundown. We need to start over. Because a lot of people might be nostalgic for that whole Route 66 feel, but that's not where a lot of people are today. People want something new, they want something different. A lot of people don't come to our waterfront, myself included. You've heard that from young people, you'll hear it from old people, you hear it from a lot of people. We want something new there. We've got a great chance to get ourselves a brand-new waterfront at very little cost to the residents. And I think that's really important, because when you look at the alternative, we could be paying for this ourselves just for the infrastructure, not putting any real significant change into it for over half a century. And for most of us in this room, we're gonna be dead before this is paid off, if we do it ourselves. And that's important, because our kids and our grandkids are still gonna be paying for something if we decide to do it on our own, rather than let a private developer take on that risk for us and take on that financial burden for us. You know, I hear a lot of people say there's other alternatives, and I just haven't seen anything credible. I've heard people suggest repealing Proposition 13. I don't think that's something we get to vote on at the city level, so I don't know where they're talking about that. You know, I hear a lot about 100 acres of development, but that's the AES site, that's an entirely different site, a totally different project. We can barely get the community to agree on anything, let alone the multiple votes we've had on the AES site. Everything going on the waterfront, trying to tie the two together, will take 20 to 30 years to get everyone in agreement on. That's not time we have. So, you know, other things people say is, why can't, you know, why is this so expensive? Why can't we afford it ourselves? And when you really look at the city funding, people look at cities like Manhattan Beach and say, why can't we do the things they do? And it's easy, they have a lot more money. They get double the revenue per capita just out of property taxes than Redondo Beach does. We don't have the same funding for city services. We can't be like a lot of our neighboring cities, because we just don't have the money. It's very simple. So, when we have something like this, you know, it's a great tremendous asset we can take advantage of. You know, there's a lot of challenges in our city, I feel like. It's not just the waterfront, there's all kinds of different parts. Why would we spend up to $200 million trying to do this ourselves and focus all of our time and energy for the next at least 50 years on one small part of the city and strip resources from every other part of the city? The Redondo Beach has a great harbor, it can have a great harbor, but that's not all Redondo Beach is. It's an entire city, and we need to be focusing on all the different parts of it, not just investing all of our time, resources, and energy in the one small part. So, I thank you again. I think the Centracal plan's great. I think it posts the risks on them, and we get a shared reward. It works great. So, again, thank you for all your time and appreciate your energy, and I hope you'll support the ALPith. Thank you.
Thank you. Penny Wirsing. And then Richard Wirsing.
Hi there. Penny Wirsing, resident of District Two for the last 14 years. This project has come a long way after all these many, many years, and I know there's been a lot of work done by experts in a number of areas, and I appreciate it as an engineer. I'm also happy to have met so many local, small-business people and residents who very strongly support this project. And I'm really looking forward to finally having a fabulous waterfront to enjoy and ask you to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard.
Good evening. My name is Richard Wirsing. I'm a resident of District Two. I'm here yet again to voice support for the project, and if I have to, I'll come back again. Please move it along. No-on-sea. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Fellows.
Scott Fellows, business owner in District Five for 26 years now. I'm very much for the Centracal project, because it makes complete financial, economic, social, and environmental sense. What I hate to see is the pier falling into the ocean, and I hate to see nobody walking down international boardwalk, because it's simply not fun, convenient, or even looks like it's safe or clean. But mostly, a lot of the objections for this whole project coming from the amount of vehicles can be coming down the highway from wherever to crowd our city and choke everything out. The one thing that I would have to say about that is that if you talk about 10,000 a day, you could probably spread that out over one week. You have maybe 1,000 a day. And where are those people going? Are they gonna be buying new houses? No, they're gonna be turning west on either 190th, Burl, or Torrance Boulevard and going down to the waterfront. Okay? So if there's more cars coming down, Bill, that's probably a good thing, don't you think? Now, do we want 100,000 cars an hour? No, we don't. But we do want enough that it's gonna support the businesses and have it all make sense for everyone. For those that are worried about the internet taking away all the retail, brick and mortar, what I can tell you about the ocean fronts and waterfronts and all the piers and stuff and all up and down Southern California and the West Coast is that they are not affected by this internet traffic. Yes, to a small degree, they are. People come to Redondo Beach and Newport Beach or Manhattan Beach Pier because of the visuals and the aesthetics. Okay? They're not looking to save a buck by going to amazon.com. Okay? So, retail and brick and mortar and the restaurants, and with a great few, are exactly what Redondo Beach needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Duane. And then Martin Holmes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Duane Roarbaugh with the Portofino Hotel and Marina. The Portofino is pro-development, and we believe the waterfront project will make a great city even better. We support Centracal and the staff recommendations. Being a major hotel marina in Redondo Beach, we know what guests want, and that's to stay and play here in Redondo Beach. So I urge you to vote in favor of the lease agreement tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Martin Holmes. Julian Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and city staff for letting me talk a second time. It was two weeks ago, in fact, at this meeting, when the episode took place behind me, one of my friends said, "We didn't hear what you were talking about, but it was a very interesting talk." I'm not gonna repeat what I said before, although I should, but I'm fully behind this project. I would like to say that talking about bricks and mortar retail in a coastal environment is not the same thing as talking about the Galleria, where businesses move out and they're big businesses. We've had Fred tonight tell us there are no leases gonna be given to big businesses. It's the big business stores that are in trouble, not the small stores that come up and down the West Coast. I can think of Seaport Village in San Diego. It's a very, very successful enterprise. And we're talking about 20% retail. If 20% retail fails, we've still got 80% success in what's gonna be built there. I would want the city to move forward with this. It's been going on far too long, and we can't afford another 20- or 30-year delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnette Travis.
I really thank all of you for your patience and long-suffering through this process. I think that our community has been involved to a very large extent, as Mr. Bruning said, unlike anything he'd ever seen on a project prior. I have to tell you, it is extensive in my experience also. But I urge you at this point, because we have had years and years of testimony, years of study, that say this project will be a success, and to look at all of the past due diligence, let it stand for itself, and please approve the process going forward, the lease. Thank you.
Okay, I'll give you a second chance here.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Martin Holmes, District One. This mall is about corporate greed and special interests, nothing else. To distract you from the corporate greed and special interests, Centracal and their political consultants have devised several clever stories, several alternative facts to confuse the obvious. It's all about money. Think this is about revitalizing our harbor? Bogus. Think this is about upgrading our infrastructure? Absurd. If this project were truly about revitalizing our harbor, you wouldn't be building a $400 million mall, 524,000 square feet, the size of 10-shade hotels, on our harbor. You wouldn't squeeze recreation into the nooks and crannies that aren't already reserved for shoppers and diners. You wouldn't pave over a third of Seaside Lagoon and open it up to polluted harbor waters. You wouldn't put a boat launch ramp in the most dangerous location in the harbor, and you wouldn't be building a 700-seat movie theater. No, it's clear this is not about revitalizing our harbor. If this project were truly about upgrading our infrastructure, you wouldn't have neglected it for decades. You would use the 1.8 million of profit that we get each year from the parking structure to perform maintenance. You would finance infrastructure using existing harbor revenue, which in January of last year, consultants said is enough to solve our infrastructure needs. You wouldn't have invested $52 million of taxpayer money, $23 million to buy harbor leases, $9 million for Fun Factory, and $20 million for additional infrastructure upgrades, $52 million of taxpayer money to make Centracal's mall a reality. No, this is not about upgrading our infrastructure. So what is driving this? Corporate greed by Centracal, and you can't blame them. Centracal wants to maximize profits. They cram as much development as possible into our harbor. They tweak the ALPith to squeeze maximum investment from the city. They protect themselves in case the plan fails or they go bankrupt. But you can't fault them, they're trying to trace a profit. How is Centracal able to get away with this? Special interests by elected officials. Last election, Centracal donated over $30,000 to the Chamber of Commerce, which used that money to support the election of Mayor Aspel, Christian Horvath, and Laura Emdi. This election, Centracal has already spent $150,000 for no-on-sea, and they're spending $30,000 more for additional candidates. The Chamber of Commerce has already spent $12,000 to support Mayor Aspel and $6,000 for Martha Barbie. This entire project is a bad deal. We pull in $3 million a year from existing harbor revenue, and that will disappear under the Centracal plan. We will be left with only $250,000 a year. Let's call it what it is, it's not revitalization, it's not infrastructure. This is a vote tonight for corporate greed and special interests.
Good. Under the clock. Jeff Abrams. And Gary Millenick.
Jeff Abrams, District One. So let's see, let's read this off Macy's, Kmart, Sears, The Limited, Wet Seal, The Pike. This is like reading retail obituaries. It's really sad to think that 20% of that nonsense they're gonna put in the marina is gonna be able to support retail. I don't know, you know, I've been listening to figures thrown around, but these are the figures we should really listen to. At Christmas, 50% of all Christmas sales were done through Amazon, not through brick and mortar stores, Amazon. 18% to 20% was done through Best Buy, and then everything else filtered down from there. You know, and somebody says, "Well, people will come to the seaside because we can offer them things to do other than boating." Well, it didn't work at The Pike in Long Beach, that fell apart. It didn't work at Pier Plaza here, that fell apart. What do they say? They say that those who ignore history are doomed to repeat it. They say that those who ignore history are doomed to repeat it. So your options here for what you're looking at doing are pretty slim. The other thing you have to realize that nobody's really talked about is that Redondo Beach is a boat harbor. It was built as a harbor, it was always designed as a harbor, and there were ancillary projects around it for food and drink, and your Fun Factors and everything else. But it's the only harbor between Marina Del Rey and San Pedro. If you do what CenterCal's planning to do, it's no longer a harbor. It's just another mall. That'll fail. And let's be honest, we don't want anything that's a failure in this city. Then we look at the other issue, is traffic. You cannot believe that when somebody, if the traffic's going to be as bad as it is because you're trying to get as many people down into the marina as possible, that the first time somebody comes down that's never been to Redondo Beach before and decides to go to this development, drives around for two and a half hours to try to find a place to park, do you ever think that that person's ever going to come back for a second shot at it? No way. Once I know, once I go somewhere and I can't find a place to park, I'm not a glutton for punishment, I'm certainly not going to go back there again. So I think the big issue is, I won't be around here in 40 years to tell you, "I told you so, so I'll do it tonight, I told you so."
Ah, an honest man here. Okay. This is a long-term project. Okay, Gary Millenick? I think he left, okay. Marnis Melzer, and then Ben Sloan after that.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Marnis Melzer. I'm with the Redondo Beach Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also a longtime resident of District Two. As we all know, the current waterfront infrastructure is in dire need of repair and replacement, and the city of Redondo Beach cannot afford the cost. Without partnering with the developer to fund the waterfront repairs, placement, and renovations, we taxpayers will have to pay for this redevelopment or revitalization. Continued inaction on the waterfront is not an option. We cannot wait for potentially disastrous collapse of the pier or a parking structure. A thorough economic analysis reveals that the city, if the city moves forward to improve the waterfront on its own, it will suffer, number one, substantial risk operationally and financially, a decrease in revenues for a sustained period of time, and three, a substantial tax increase for taxpayers in the city of Redondo Beach. The waterfront revitalization project will generate new substantial net revenues for the city general fund. The Redondo Beach Chamber of Commerce sees only two options: the developers, CenterCal, funds repair and replacement of the not-run-down harbor and pier infrastructure at their cost, or we, the residents of Redondo Beach, fund the estimated 200 million by increasing property taxes for every homeowner. The waterfront is a win-win for the city and for the residents. The city gets a new parking structure and infrastructure repairs, the waterfront creates as many as 1,000 new jobs, as well as ongoing revenues for Redondo Beach. We at the Chamber support the staff recommendation and encourage you to adopt the resolution and support. Thank you very much, and I appreciate everything that you all do.
Thank you. Ben Sloan, hi, everyone, both ways here. Okay, Ben, how are you?
Fine, how are you tonight, council, staff? I'm a proud citizen, been here 25 years, live in District Two, and we're here to talk about the lease. And none of you were here but a few months back, right at this very podium, the president of CenterCal stood right here and said it's a 50-year project. I struggle with how are we going to get a 99-year lease, but the project's only got 50 years. Now, some people call it a mall. I think you call it a life-cycle project or something, a life... You have a term for it. But the term is nice, but what happens in 10 years when that form of business, that form of style goes away? What happens in 20 years? None of us are going to be here. What's that mall going to be? It's stuck. So I really think you owe to yourselves to really ask that question, do we have to have a 99-year lease? Everything's negotiable. Okay? Secondly, let's talk about, I only got two items. Second thing was cost. We hear a lot about cost, 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 cost. And staff, I know, did a very due diligence job, because they all said it at least twice tonight. But I think you owe yourselves some due diligence. Their staff, you know, they're going to tell you kind of what you want to hear, and you, it's kind of like asking the fox to wash over the hen house, and you need to do due diligence and ask yourself, are these numbers realistic? We all watched this DeLamo Mall over here do this major, major remodel. They built a mile of shops, they built a brand-new Macy's, did the parking lot, a new Nordstrom. And according to their website, that was $200 million. And I've heard numbers tonight like 200, 300, $400 million. So I think you owe the citizens here some due diligence yourself to sit back a minute before you sign this lease and go, "Can I get a third party, an independent party, to go, are these numbers realistic? Is this really the real numbers I'm looking at?" We've got one vendor. We've got one person that's been on this project. In my past life, when I had a job and I had one contractor bidding a job, I had to jump through hoops to prove that. Okay? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And then Jackie Melton after that.
Good evening again, Mayor, and staff, and City Council, and all my neighbors, whether they're for or against this, let's just think of Redondo Beach as a community. I did not come to Redondo Beach, and my first stop here, I told Martha Barbie, was about 40 years ago, so I'm really dating myself. And I know an awful lot about retail, and Jeff and I, in our earlier careers, worked in retail management. We worked for chains that no longer exist today. I worked in the Northridge Fashion Center, and this was in the '90s. The stores then were having a complete struggle. They couldn't pay their leases, they were laying people off. That was one of my first layoffs from work. So I'll tell you, I'm not a big fan of oversized retail at this point. To project 40 years down the line, or 90 years, CenterCal is a speculator. They love our prime real estate, they're looking at dollars, they're not looking at people. He's telling us, "Go down to the 3D model." Well, do you know, it's only open short hours, and I work for a living, so, you know, I've seen pictures of it, so I don't even need to go and look. But I just want to sum up, because everybody here is repeating and repeating, you know, Redondo Beach has five districts, right? And we have revitalization needed in each and every one of them. I drive from Avenue G to El Segundo every day, and I can count an awful lot of empty storefronts. And I'd like my mayor and my council to do something first about this retail, this current stuff, the Smart and Final location at Pearl and PCH, a strip down in the avenues that's been vacant forever. I've already talked about Legato and PVN. Maybe Mr. Bruning wants to talk to Edward Zucker. I don't think so, you know? But anyway, you know, we're driving more retail. We've got 10,000 square feet at the 52 condo project, we've got 21,000 square feet. If Legato gets approved, you know, on and on. The South Bay Galleria is pending. So where are we at? And I'll just sum it up. We didn't talk about the general plan tonight, you know, that was one of my topics I didn't get in during open-mic. But I'll say, you know, just slow down, we've already been, oh, everybody said, "Move it forward." But the general plan is estimated to take two years to complete. By then, who knows what will be in our country. So I know it's prime real estate, I know we want to do something to revitalize it, but a 99-year lease, no way. And I agree with my husband, I won't be here in 40 years either, and even the grandchildren of people I know, I don't have kids, and their children, I don't even think they want this kind of development. So please keep Redondo Beach a beach, a marina, a harbor, and then maybe throw in some quality restaurants and small business. That's my take on Redondo tonight.
Okay. Jackie Melton.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Doug Bagley. My wife and I are residents of Redondo Beach. I'm here to urge you to approve the proposed lease agreement and any accompanying actions that will move this project forward. For us as residents, for me, there are basically three takeaways. Takeaway number one, the place is in bad shape, and it's getting worse. There is no such thing here as status quo. It's either going to continue to get worse, or we're going to have to make a major intervention in order to make it better. And we're in favor of the major intervention to make it better. Takeaway number two, the plan. There's been a lot of discussion about the plan. No plan is ever going to make everybody happy. I think there's been a lot of pretty good quality thinking go into this plan. It's gone through substantial review and comment, and there's been a lot of high-quality scrutiny and criticism of the plan, and I've seen adjustments, I've seen accommodations, I've seen the plan changed in response to those criticisms. So I think you have a well-vetted plan that will stand the test. And then finally, the financing. I don't think you're probably going to get another opportunity for a financing plan that will be as taxpayer-friendly as this one. I think this is an opportunity for us, and I strongly recommend that we take this opportunity. So I urge you to support the necessary steps to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one up is Steve Schumaker.
Good evening, Steve Schumaker. I think all I bring to the table is history. I was in business in the harbor before many of you were born. In the mid-'60s, I started a little store selling fishnet and tiki's. I went from that to an art gallery, the art gallery to a tavern, from a tavern to a master lease. Former girlfriend and I owned the leases on the pier in the beginning '90s. I can tell you, I'm not an expert in this field, but it's my best business decision is that the problems in the harbor area were created by bad business decisions on the part of the city. I don't think the city can repair and redevelop and lease the area. I think CenterCal can. So I think you should approve the lease.
Thank you. All right, Julie Moore.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Scott Young, I have residence in Redondo Beach. And real quickly, I do support the waterfront, I do support the fact that no-on-C, and I truly believe that if you build it, they will come. I think it's very important to Redondo Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Delia Becki, District Two. I dream I am not here because of fear. I already know the outcome of the vote for the lease agreement between the city and Redondo Beach Waterfront and LC Delaware Corporation, but I have dreams. Every day I dream that the voice of the residents has been heard. Every day I dream that Redondo Beach is a city with vision. Every day I dream that Redondo will stop the developers to run the city. Every day, every day I dream that Redondo Beach has learned the lesson of Pier Plaza. Every day I dream that the proposed industrial park for a dying retail industry that CenterCal wants for the waterfront is built else, somewhere inland where it belongs. Every day I dream that the architects can fulfill their creativity without the developers imposing the date and fake aesthetic they want. Every day I dream that one day the architects won't have to talk about plants and flowers to distract the attention to the public from the ugliness of the massive buildings that do not belong to Redondo Beach, any waterfront, or any urban oceanfront environment. Every day I dream that the view of those will never, will be preserved and no disgrace with the lack of complementary architectural aesthetics. Every day I dream that I will not need to rent a helicopter to see the ocean, and will rent a boat to see the sunset. Every day I dream that the line of the power plant, the Pier and King Harbor, has begun a unified cohesive project unified by its architecture and planning, and selected from among the best architectural submissions made from national and international design competition of the world's best architects. Every day I dream that the city will never sign any lease agreement with Redondo Beach Waterfront LC and a standard tragedy for 99 years, the loss forever of the beauty of Harvard. Every day I dream.
Thank you, Delia. You came in under, all right, first time for that, good job. Joanne Turk. And then next up would be Laura Duke.
Hello, Joanne Turk. I live in Manhattan Beach, but my heart has been in Redondo Beach for the last 40 years. I've worked in the harbor all that time. My husband is a partner in police on the pier, has been for 28 years, and before that, he had the Redondo sport fishing, a sport fishing pier. We're very much in support of this CenterCal project. Mr. Bruning has been very kind and open to us, and the city now is going to rebuild, thanks to all of you, the sport fishing pier, or build a new one, and Mr. Bruning is going to build a building, and police will provide the food and the heart. So there's a saying in the real estate business, sometimes your first offer is the best offer. And all this, although CenterCal's is certainly not the city's first offer, the CenterCal project is certainly the best of the best offers I've seen in 40 years, and we should not lose them. I think we should look back at history and see how Measure B was voted down on the AES property. If it hadn't been voted down, we'd be two years into their five-year project of closer to 220, when the plant could be, they could be making plans to take the plant down for Pete's sake. Now we don't know, we've bought uncertainty, and we don't know if it's going to be a power plant, which could stand for another 50 years, a new one, or a battery storage place, or a desal plant, or AES could simply put a chain-link fence around it and let it sit, let it stockpile until finally the residents of Redondo and the team gets together again and decides something can be built there. So I think we're in the fourth quarter of what's been a very long game, and I say, "Let's move the ball forward," and let's not lose this opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. Laura Duke. After Laura is Paul Moses.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor, city staff. My name's Laura Duke, and I live in District Three. This... This project needs to be smaller and a better deal for Redondo Beach. When done right, public and private groups work together on a pier and harbor, but never for view and sky-blocking buildings of dense retail right on the ocean. Our pier makes money. Fixing and maintaining infrastructure in phases, adding plants, enhance lighting, new paint can beautify an area. These may seem small, but they attract people and make them feel good. It's like making over your house or yard. It's infusing your character and that's real placemaking, not the plastic generic one this developer has cooked up. A good harbor pier has unique identity, easy water access for all, and dedicated communal areas. We can freshen up the look of our giant metal pier sales, which are gone from Center Cal's model. They are legacy art installations themselves, provide shade, and are the logo of many South Bay groups, including the Redondo Beach Pier itself and the South Bay Film Society. Center Cal conceded to keep the sport fishing pier and we swooned until we learned that we'll be paying for it. And I still don't know what happened to one councilman's suggestion in October to reduce the buildings from 19 to the slightly less gross 17 buildings. It was never brought up again. In the ALPIF presentation a couple weeks ago, we saw some real alternative facts. One I source slide showed how without Center Cal, we will have to pay $9 to $15 million for the Harbor Drive extension and $6 million for the Seaside Lagoon opening to the water, which is funny since if we say no to them, we wouldn't be implementing these plans anyway. But I guess it's left in there to fatten up our supposed required expenses. With this plan, we'll spend $30 million on lease buyouts and $20 million conservatively on piers, pilings, seawall, boat ramp, and sport fishing pier. In return, we'll get a piddly $20,000 a month for 30 acres of oceanside property for a generation. I suspect rent along PCH for just a couple of establishments would compare. How many improvements could we already have made with $50 million and an actual healthy relationship with a private group that knows piers and listens to us? By the way, I think it's odd that some who back this plan suggest that those questioning it are somehow cowardly or un-American. I think it's brave and most American thing to do to question when something's fishy. This plan is not right, not aesthetically, not financially for the residents. It would be a mistake to sign off on this deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Moses. Next up is Bob Pinsler.
Good evening, Paul Moses, District Two. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to say that I support the project. I urge you to vote for this lease agreement. We passed Measure G because the residents of Redondo want to see progress with a plan. We can't afford the infrastructure upgrades on our own, so this is a good deal. And many local businesses support the waterfront proposal and I look forward to seeing them. I'd love to see a new quality seafood. I'd love to see a new King Harbor brewing that doesn't have rain gutters on the inside of the building because the ceiling leaks so badly it'll drip into your beer. I look forward to the Seaside Lagoon being restored to open shoreline. Finally, we can stop paying off the regional quality control board and get rid of the man-made heat exchanger that it is. I don't know why anyone would pay to let their toddler swim in the outflow of the power plant. I look forward to the new boutique hotel. The New Shade Hotel was built under Measure G and it's a great experience. I look to, forward to seeing another great hotel in our harbor. Most of all, I look forward to the new public market. It will be a fantastic opportunity for our local restaurateurs and new chefs to bring new concepts. This Market Hall concept is something that's taking off in Southern California in new and existing buildings. If anyone's been to the Ferry Building in San Francisco or Oxbow Market up in Napa, it's a great experience. And they are just wonderful places. Again, I support this project and I urge you to vote in favor of this lease and vote no on Measure C. The election is March 7th. God, it couldn't come fast enough. Thank you.
Bob Pinsler. Next up is Tal Finney.
As I understand it, the mayor spends a great deal of time bemoaning the actions of previous councils. I know a bit about that. What the council is preparing to do is one of those items that future councils will look back upon and rightfully question the judgment of the people who are sitting in these seats. What you're preparing to approve is a ma, building a mausoleum to retail. I spent over 30 years in the technology business. I have not only seen, but I've been involved with the process of making analog sales processes such as brick and mortar retail obsolete. This waterfront project will provide future councils not only with the opportunity to shake their heads in disbelief, but tie their hands financially in ways that we cannot yet comprehend. We gave up $2.75 million in ongoing annual revenue with the chance, and it is an ephemeral chance, to receive higher revenues sometime in the future. What we have here is movie business accounting. At some point in the future, we are supposed to trust whoever owns the contract, not to fudge the numbers, to make sure that it never reaches the level of revenue at which the city gets its pitiful share. The means by which these revenues can be hidden from the city are legion, and there are no means by which future councils can retaliate. But we know now that there are three elements of this project that are doomed to failure. Retail's loss to online is clear. Movie attendance is down particularly in the, as the ability to enjoy at home high-quality content with extraordinary technology has advanced. And the number of restaurants planned for this area, the supersized number of restaurants planned for this area, will find it hard to fill their seats as the other two draws fall short of the outsized projections you have been promised. If you wish to be the future laughingstock, continue with what you're planning to do. After all, with term limits, you will not be the ones required to resolve the problems you are setting in motion.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Council. Take a quick notes here. Thanks for having me here tonight. It's been very interesting listening to all the comments. I've been a resident here now for 15 proud years in District One. My background, I mentioned before, I've had a chance to communicate with you guys before. I was the state planner for the state. I was the OPR Director to the Governor, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, so I ran all the SEQUA for the state, general plan guidelines, all those types of things. I have been a coastal commission member. I have sat on the State Lands Commission for three different administrations. I've been the deputy controller of California and therefore handled state financing and corporate issues, budget issues at the state level for many years. Since then, I've been a corporate finance and land use attorney and I've worked on multiple public works, schools, university buildings, courthouses, power plants, tunnels, bridges, coastal projects, commercial projects, even state parks. And again, I'm a very proud local resident and I am a professional in my area, Mr. Brand. Yesterday, last time we spoke, I mean, the last meeting, he said there were no professionals that were not being paid. I'm a citizen and I've had a great deal of experience in this area. And having looked at the project and spent a good deal of time observing the project and researching the project, lots of time with staff, attending countless public meetings, I think that you have a very exciting opportunity here. I had the opportunity to address the state's infrastructure projects since 1998, actually since 1995, now that I think about it, including the new Bay Bridge, countless retrofits of public buildings. And the infrastructure opportunity being provided to you by Center Cal is unheard of, really. And it worries me that I hear people who are my neighbors speaking about things that they really don't understand when it comes to these kinds of amounts of money that are involved. It's a unique area. We're not just a normal straight pier like Long Beach or Manhattan Beach or Hermosa Beach. We have a really unique thing here that's very attractive. The parking lot is in serious condition. It requires serious financing. And it's amazing that you have a private company that's willing to take this opportunity to take the risk for you. And I think it's a great thing. Also, they are very community-oriented. I've worked on countless public and private projects and I have never, ever seen this type of effort by a private company to include a community, especially one that is in so many ways contrarian. It's amazing to me. And I'm very excited and proud of these guys for having the risk-bearing nature to do this. And that means that they care, or they wouldn't do it. I've worked with companies that don't. Okay? Also, everything they're looking at addresses the environmental soundness of the community and of the project itself. They're looking into all kinds of things that I had to suggest as an attorney to clients in the past. Also, the project itself, having looked at it, looks very inviting and intimate to me. They have all kinds of arts projects associated with it. And the energy being put into this, I believe, is again, second to none. So I would very much encourage the city council to sign this lease and move forward with this company. Thank you.
Thanks, Tal. Okay. Justice Mastriana. And then Joanne Galen.
I don't want to follow that guy. Justice Mastriana, I, I think that their presentation said it all, the due diligence that went in, 10 years of planning. I don't want to start over with 10 years. I know people were saying that it's all about money. I don't personally think it's all about money, but thank God that they want to give us all that money to do it. That's awesome that somebody wants to partner with us. It's a win-win, I think, for us. Somebody else had said that brick and mortar is dead. I don't know if they'd been to the Delama Mall, but people are definitely spending money, just not in Redondo. So yeah, those were my opinions. Thank you.
Okay, Joanne. Don't agree with somebody, don't hoot. All right, Joanne Galen, and then Mary Yule.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to disrespectfully disagree with some of these comments here tonight. There's so many wrong numbers, there's so much crap that's, excuse me, sorry. There's so much bad information that's said. I so appreciate Fred and what you're trying to do for our city. Thank you.
Address us.
Oh, sorry, sir. And I'd like to just give a shout out to you. We are so lucky and I'm so honored that you've been my mayor for the last four years and I just hope and pray that that continues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mary Yule. And then, okay, Ashley Brockman.
Mary Yule, I used to say District Two, but really, I belong to all the districts in Redondo Beach. We're a community. And I think that although this District Two project is getting so much attention, so much more deserves to happen in Districts Four and Five. I also want you all to know that I so agree with Martin Holmes and his figures. I'll tell you why. He doesn't have a motive for fooling people. This is indeed about corporate greed and private interest. To privatize public land entrusted to the city of Redondo Beach, to conform with coastal commissions, balance of recreational use over commercial use is what the, the city has been given the privilege to manage. 20% of brick and mortar retail does not begin to account for Center Cal being able to privatize other areas of development, such as the real possibility of relegating Seaside Lagoon to its hotel guests only. Gentrifying the waterfront, making it a better tourist attraction at the expense of the South Bay residents who are forfeiting 80% of their ocean view along Harbor Drive and above Harbor Drive. We will also suffer double the traffic. And more, the integrity and the safety of the boat launch is severely compromised at the expense of our youth who have enjoyed Llanakila and other safer boating opportunities. Piecemeal development is what you are proceeding with, putting the cart before the horse. And it shows how out of tune you all are, many of these young people here also, with Sierra Club and environmental defense funding in general. All in all, I am voting for yes on C and educating as many of my city residents about its liabilities as I can reach. The residents of the South Bay deserve to protect the waterfront that drew them here in the first place and the last place.
Thank you.
Good evening. A little nervous, so, I'm Ashley Brockman, District Two, and feeling well-served and represented by Mr. Brand. I grew up in Manhattan Beach and I have moved to Redondo 15 years ago. My family has a slip in the King Harbor Marina. I wasn't planning, planning on speaking tonight, but I'm up here, so I'm definitely not in my twenties anymore, but I am in my thirties and I can represent that demographic. I do go to the pier. I go with my friends. I go with coworkers. We have events there a lot. I go with my two young nieces. The pier, which I do go to, does need to be revitalized. I don't believe that there's many who would disagree with that, but this is not the plan. While as a cyclist, I might not, it might be nice not to have to drive, ride through the parking lot. And while the model was beautifully executed, I'm against the Center Cal, the Center Cal plan. This plan is too large, too overdeveloped, and much too dense. It is out of sync with the identity of Redondo Beach and out of touch with current retail trends, with major retail brands closing, failed ventures like the Long Beach, Long Beach Pike, the shopping center, which I remember opening on PCH in Hermosa that's been empty for years, basically, and the Redondo Beach's own Cape Cod-style Pier Plaza. Plans for the boat launch are not safe for boaters. The plans for the Seaside Lagoon are unsafe for children. Not exactly the same, but close to Marina Del Rey's Mother Beach is consistently rated the lowest water, water quality. We need open spaces on our waterfront, not an Uber mall blocking all ocean views, especially while the galleria is in the state that it's in and North Redondo feels as overlooked as it does. This huge mall is bright and gleaming as the model is, diminishes the natural beauty of our most precious asset, the beach and the marina. I'm voting yes on C and as a constituent, I am strongly against the Center Cal. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jess Money. After Jess is Todd Lowenstein.
Jess Money, District Three. This project is a horror movie because like any good movie, it requires you to suspend disbelief. 99-year lease, if I'm not mistaken, the King Harbor lease was 1960 and originally for 50 years. How were things in 1960? How did we communicate? What kind of cars did we drive? What were our schools like? Radically different. Now, retail is in a retrenchment. That's already been noted. Global climate change, if some of the more extreme scenarios come to pass, the second floor of these shops is going to be accessible to stand-up paddlers. We are not going to have traffic concerns about cars. We're going to be trying to figure out how many personal watercraft can be parked down there. The deal itself is ridiculous. The square footage ask in these proposals is delusional. The equivalent to the Grove, Rodeo Collection, I guarantee you Bulgari and Hermes and Fred Hayman will be in downtown Manhattan Beach long before they're in Redondo. When they remake Pretty Woman, whoever plays Julia Roberts is not going to be shopping in the Redondo Harbor. The generally, the graphic for the generally accepted accounting principles, I'm betting those are the same principles that served WorldCom, Enron, Arthur Andersen, Lehman Brothers, and Bear Stearns just fine. I come out of Hollywood. It isn't what you, what you bring in that counts, it's what you can avoid paying out. We get to evaluate and audit. Really? Do we get to see invoices? Do we get to see time cards? Do we get to access emails so that we can find out if Susie Q's hours that are allocated to this project, she was really working that many hours on us? Can we even find out if Susie Q is working 40 hours a week, but with multiple Center Cal clients, her time's getting billed out 50, 60, 70 hours a week? I'm guessing the answer to that is a no. I noticed the wording on this thing, committed tenants, but no leases are signed. The jargon, leadership, a highly qualified sales leasing team, and tentatively programmed. The bottom line, this is a lose, lose, lose. If it succeeds, as a miracle, we'll drown in traffic. If it fails, we'll be stuck, not with a white elephant, but with a If it fails, we'll be stuck, not with a white elephant, but with a brown elephant turd. One thing that hasn't changed over hundreds of years is waterfront
You're done. Thanks.
Use of waterfront property.
Thank you. Okay. And Todd.
Good evening. Todd Lowenstein, District Two. I'm under no illusions that you guys are going to change your minds right now. It seems like your minds are made up. I wish that would be the case, but I don't believe it will happen. But I want you to think about a couple of things in terms of this deal. One is the participation rent. Is this done EBITDA, earnings before interest, taxes, depreciation, and amortization for the participation rent? Or is it done after that? And the second thing is, why wasn't this done on gross incomes? That's what other developers I've talked to have said that's what their deals are for. Why didn't we do that? Because it's a much better upside than it is for what we're doing now. In terms of the brick and mortar, let me read you a quote, the headline from the Wall Street Journal from last week, this time at night on the twenty-fourth, from Esther Fung. "Mall owners, aka lifestyle centers, mall owners rush to get out of the mall business. Mall landlords are increasingly walking away from struggling properties, leaving creditors in the lurch and posing a threat to the values of nearby real estate." Brick and mortar is dying, as people have said, Mr. Abrams has said. The reason Amazon is doing well is because of convenience and selection. It's not because people want to go there and save a dime necessarily. And people won't come here necessarily to shop because of the location. They'll go online. As Bob Pindler had said, movie theaters are getting crushed right now. My company actually puts movie theaters out of business. When I was at the mall, when I was at the waterfront model today, I asked them, which movie chains could you see coming in here? And one of which was Cinepolis. Well, Cinepolis is my client. And guess what they just built? A video-on-demand site. If they were so believing in movie theaters, they wouldn't be building a video-on-demand site. I can tell you that. So we're, I'm a hockey fan. Wayne Gretzky always said, skate to where the puck is going to be, not where it was right now. We're skating where the puck was yesterday. In terms of the, in terms of what a previous speaker had said about AES, AES would not have moved any faster than it is now. And they use the same scare tactics back then, is that no one's going to be interested in it. This is our last chance. Well, how many RFPs do developers displace with AES in order to develop the land? They're down to at least five, if not more, developers. This is the coastline. They're not making any more coastline. We will get developers in here if sea passes. And finally, I'll leave you with this. You all know I was on the school board before. You know about the history of the Aviation High School, where it was given to the city for a pittance. That was thirty-five, thirty-six years ago. Do you think now that the school board would do it the same way? They give up all that land to the city for a pittance? Think about that. This is ninety-nine years. You don't want to be questioned for your decision-making like the school board was back then. They said they couldn't do anything but do this because they had no choice, they couldn't afford the maintenance. Well, guess what? They can certainly, they could certainly afford the maintenance if they owned that land right now, and the city now owns it. I beg you to reconsider this. It's a ninety-nine-year potential mistake. Give it some thought, go slowly, and make the right decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Okay. That's the end of the written request. How many more people want to speak?
Two more, Mayor.
Okay, just get a rough idea.
Mayor, there's two.
Okay, well, you got a real, yes, you're here. You're there. Go ahead.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I just wanted to say, I know Barbie's taking count tonight. I've taken count in the past. But I want to say, those numbers don't show the emails and letters of those who write in. I'm tired again tonight, only, only got four hours sleep, so forgive me. It amused me, in El Segundo, when we went to see the model, it said shop on the wall. Now, at the, at Ruby's on the, on the rocks, it says community. I don't know how much, I don't know what credence they gave to the word community, because they haven't listened to anything that concerned residents, that have lived here forever and truly loved this community. All we are asking for is compromise. We're not asking for them to go away. We're not saying, don't do nothing. By the way, boat sales are up, retail is down. And as far as listening to experts, a wonderful gentleman tonight, Matt Udoitz, he is an expert. He lives in Seascape. So there are experts out there that see the problems here. And to talk about the success or fail of this project, I worked on Santa Monica Place less than ten years ago. It's already failing. They're refilling it with medical offices and residential. The Pike, it's a waterfront destination with all kinds of freeway access and many, many public attractions, marine land. It's a ghost town. The Point in Santa, on Rosecrans in El Segundo, two years old, already slowing down. Del Amo, just being remodeled less than a year ago, struggled at Christmas time. So, let's, all we are asking for is compromise. If you want community, let's compromise.
Charlie Zamanski, we have a couple of questions.
By the way, yes on sea. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, Council staff, Charlie Zamanski, again, from District One. Please approve this lease, ALPF. Socrates stated that the secret of progress is not a fight between change versus preserving the old, but it's a vision of the future. Now, we have been waiting for improvements in this area for thirty years. The earlier comments about deferred maintenance were right on, but it's more than just deferred maintenance, it's lack of upgrades and lack of vision and a need for rebuilding from the ground up. We have an opportunity to prepare this area for the rising seas and be one of the first in the state to be secure for those coming decades. The Seaside Lagoon comments are really mostly a myth. I've swum in it numerous times with my kids. First is that the water is not warm. Second, the water is not really pleasant to swim in, it's rather slimy and gritty. The location is surrounded by a high chain link fence and is closed seventy-five percent of the time, now a hundred percent of the time. Residents are desensitized to how decrepit the area is. It's all base rock, asphalt, and alleyway and chain link. It's time to move forward. I have two girls who love the beach, and it would be great for us to, as baby boomers, leave their cohorts a positive Redondo environment. Here's another myth, twelve thousand cars. Let sanity check that estimate. It's a line of cars at fifteen feet per car that's thirty-four miles long. That would run from Shoreline Village to the Santa Monica Pier, one line of cars. Per day? Give me a break. We still have financial analysis, it's been restated again, performed by aerospace engineers, and the continued allegations of financial games being played. Let's move forward. Comparing the existing plans to the old Pier Plaza is like comparing night and day. These two, these two developments are not comparable at all. And why did Del Amo spend two-hundred million dollars on their mall? I think it's because people still, somehow or another, going to stores or to movie theaters, they will still leave their homes. They will go someplace. All this doom and gloom about, you know, the stuff I can watch on my wall at home doesn't bring me to an area where somebody will provide me with a, you know, a shirt and a while I watch a movie. So, in closing, vote no on sea, and also please approve this lease. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Kastner. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Laura Kastner, Harsaw, and I'm from District One. And I just kind of got into this whole thing from all the politics that's happening. Last time I was here, everyone was in Hawaiian t-shirts, Hawaiian shirts, so it was kind of great to see you guys in suits today. I'm a fashion designer and a garment manufacturer. I had my own retail store on Melrose, and lots of celebrities came. And recently, I took, part of my job is to go to different malls and see what's going on in the malls. See what's trending, see what's selling, and nothing's selling. And I went to a Del Amo yesterday, and half of it is a ghost town. So my new job, actually, is building websites for, you know, garment manufacturers. That's what I'm doing now. That's where it's going. I would love to see a compromise of some restaurants, some, you know, open space. My uncle is the president of the council in another beach town in New Jersey. He took a look at Centecal's plans and said that looks like a canyon. It looks like a bunch of boxes. And I happen to think the Point at El Segundo, or whatever that is, is a big giant parking lot. I mean, it could look like Fashion Island. I mean, you know, where it's like the cars are around and it's all this nice big space. Why do we have to have a bunch of boxes like that? Can't we, I mean, is this it, really? And I just want to say one more thing. I grew up in the Marina Del Rey. I've lived here for twenty years on the Sapphire Street, same house. And I moved here and I've stayed in the South Bay because it is special. It is not the West Side. It is family-oriented. It is not overdeveloped. And that's why I think most of the people live here. I can't even get to Santa Monica. Forget about it. Might as well be the Valley, you know? So, thank you for listening. And yes on sea.
Okay, anybody? Now, I know that, I know that you're, some of you game the system to be the last speaker. We're going to, so just get up here so we can get out of here some good time. Thanks.
Hello, Fred Fasson, South Redondo. There's an old saying, you know, measure twice, cut once. I think I mentioned it to you once before. You guys really need to measure like three, four times and cut once, because by giving away that whole area and subjecting it to the changes that are going to go through, if anything goes wrong, who's on the hook for when it goes wrong? Okay? When there's a cost overrun, who pays for the cost overrun? When there's a problem that has to have a change order, who pays for the change order? Who pays for the steel when it goes up in price? Who pays for all the rebar when it goes up in price? I don't think you guys took that into consideration. You need a hotel? We have plenty of hotels. You need shopping? We have plenty of shopping. You have movie theaters? We have plenty of movie theaters. What are we missing? We're not missing anything. What we're missing is these guys wanting to make a profit, steal our neighborhood. And for one that's been here for over forty years, I'm not going to let it happen. I'll die before that happens.
Okay. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, Council staff. My name is Ian Bardine. I am a District Two Water person. Sunday is going to be a pretty big day. There is a big football game. Two teams get on the field, bash the crap out of each other, and one of them ends up a winner because they earned it. This is our Super Bowl. Unfortunately, the deck is stacked against the people. I was looking at the agenda. Under this topic, it says, A, open public hearing and take testimony; B, close public hearing; C, adopt the resolution. Don't listen to what the people say. They've already made up their mind. Let's get a fair shake in this. Now, one other, another comment is, somebody said that there is no other alternatives. Well, if there is no other alternatives out there, other developers willing to step in, why did Centecal need an exclusive bargaining agreement? They're afraid that somebody else is going to, that we might talk to somebody who come up with a more reasonable plan. And finally, somebody did say that Councilperson Barbie does take notes, and she's very diligent about it, but I found out that that doesn't mean a thing based on the results of the appeals of the EIR and the boat ramp. If you counted up the people that were for versus against, the against far outweighed the for, yet the council voted for the minority. Anyway, what I'm asking is that the council give the people a fair shake. Thank you.
Thank you. And come on down.
Hi, Tom Royce, District Four. Wow. Where does one start? The AES and the traffic report and the EIR, have you guys taken into consideration what's going to happen with the AES when that does get developed? Because right now, we're talking about an extensive impact of traffic on the area built off of, based off of this development. What's going to happen when you guys do develop the AES site? Where's that traffic going to get dumped? Has anybody taken that into consideration at the EIR? Number two, has the council, anybody sitting on the council that's going to make this vote, have you seen the financials? Because all I heard was a guy talking about backing into numbers. That's really interesting. These guys are going to justify what they need to justify in order to justify this development, but I don't think anybody sitting on this council's seen any of the numbers or any of the facts or any of the financials for these guys are supposed to be backed up in being able to do this project. I think what you're hearing is their hired guns tell you a bunch of numbers that you guys are just going to sit here and push through anyway. I mean, I think the most important thing we heard tonight is that it actually says, adopt the resolution. It doesn't say vote on the resolution. Number three, the Galleria Mall, take a breath. The Galleria Mall just submitted plans to build a hotel, six-hundred-and-fifty rental units, a small recreation area, because they are dying on the vine with retail. They want to build six-hundred-and-fifty residential retail rentals so they can turn that land into a profit, and you guys want to go ahead and copy their model and bring retail into the beach? How does this make any sense? Are you paying attention to what's going on in your city? And finally, like a bad episode of The Sopranos, most lawyers would be recruited if they were getting money from the side that they're voting on to help them get reelected. Thank you.
You tend not to listen when people yell, so it's better to be...
Yeah, when I'm upset.
Okay, come on now. There you go.
Hi, Danny Klein. I just got involved in this whole project. Unfortunately, over the last several decades, I've been gone. My family's been here for over seventy years, by the way, so we've seen a lot of changes over the last few decades. In the early part of this millennium, I was gone overseas, out of country, protecting everybody's right to voice their opinion. I don't care what it is, either side. I do think we should thank the head of Centrecal for being there. He said he's going to be there Sunday, on Super Bowl Sunday, to view the 3D model. I think that's great, other than the sign says they're closed on Sundays. So, this is the guy you hired to do the job, doesn't know his own business hours. That's a problem. The other, the guy sitting next to him says it's a unique shape, designed pier. Absolutely, it is. Said there's not another one like it, even in Long Beach. Last time I checked, I can't walk a straight line to Parker's Lighthouse. That's your expert. No one ever talked to me, anybody in my family that's been here for generations, asked us our opinion on this. We all have a great stake in this. We've watched this place evolve. My dad and myself are both watermen. This is taking that away from us. We take great pride in where we're from. Everybody here in the South Bay does. Many people tattoo their names, "South Bay," on them as a badge of honor. This is plowing that under, even in the architecture. The architecture is traditionally Victorian and Spanish style. I don't see that in that model. I don't see where anything was taken into consideration from the, from the people that are so deeply rooted here. And I just urge you guys, please, take a second glance, take a deep breath. There's no need to jump the gun. Anytime I've seen anybody jump the gun, there's been casualties, and usually it's collateral damage. It's something I do not want to see in my city. And usually, it's collateral damage. It's something I do not want to see in my city. It's something that just can't be done. This is 99 years. When my family came here in 1946, things are drastically different from then. Imagine a 99-year lease that still wouldn't be over from a project that started in 1946. And no one can predict the future. I was in telecom when I thought copper would rule forever and I could retire on it. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Who's next?
Good evening, Lawrence Chaves, Redondo Beach resident. I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I figured why not. So clearly, there's division. There's been division in Redondo for some time on all these developments. No one wants to see our city overrun and look like Play Vista. But I'm okay with the pike. I'm okay with Third Street, Santa Monica. I'm okay with this design on the waterfront. As for, there's some conversations about brick and mortar retail going out of business. Yes, I've heard that. Also, we've been in a recession or trying to get out of a recession for the past eight years, so that might have something to do with it as well. This is gonna bring in jobs for Redondo, and I think it looks like a great plan. And surely, we can move forward together, not bring everything to a halt and start over again. And yes, 99 years is a long time, so I'd imagine some of those stores are going to turn over. If the retail store doesn't work, something else will come in. But no on C. I'll see everyone at the 5K on Sunday, and go Pats.
There you go. Okay, who's up next? Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, everyone. This is my first time speaking like this, but I just want to speak. I come from a place, I hear reasons...
What's your name, the record?
My name is Kimberly Harrison. Sorry. Over and over again, I can hear my dad in my head. He is passed now. But right across the street where McDonald's now sits, used to be my dad's office. Redondo Vacuum and Janitorial was adjacent to the antique corral. 1987, we had a huge fire. It started next door. It consumed the entire premises. My dad came into business through his dad. He had slept on the floor for six months out of the Navy. Every day worked to take over that business. In 1987, I think we were in about our 40th year or something like that. We didn't get one red cent from Farmers Insurance. But the city, we take in the city's machines. We take in the schools, the parks, recreation, fire, police. At that time, we were in huge debt at that moment. And the city said, "You know what, Mr. Martin?" My dad's name is Forrest Martin. Said, "Just do what you can do." They brought in the telephone pole that's there that lights up that parking lot for my dad. They set up two trailers, and every single day, six days a week, my dad, my brothers, my sister, myself, we took merchandise in and out of those trailers and put them on the sidewalk, our vacuums. For two years, the city, the compassionate body it is, kept us in business, the people. This place was built on our forefathers setting it up so that our future can have an easy space, an easy breathe, carefree area. They fought really hard for that so that we, all of us here trying to make a buck, could sit easy on it, if that's the opinion. I just say that we should kind of take a look back at what was fought for us to take advantage of today. And so I say yes to the mall, however, please, there's compromise. But we're taking away from everything that the city has given to us people and to preserve that, and yet allow some growth. We do need revisions on the pier. We do need structural upkeep, but not at the price of all these people and not at the price of taking away from what our forefathers set forth.
Thank you. Okay.
Joan Irvine, District One, Mayor, Staff, and everybody else. One of the things that, and I don't have a copy of it in front of me. I briefly reviewed that New York Times or Wall Street Journal article this week. And it also said, if you go later on down into the article, it says that what's happening, what's working, is the lifestyle centers with the entertainment, you know, with everything else combined, that it's not just retail. So that is what people are doing nowadays, and developers would not be getting involved in that unless they were going to be successful. Also, people do talk about, "We have to slow down." Well, come on, slow down. This has been going on for 28 years, trying to figure out what to do. The city had to buy a lot of land back and leases back. And it's been five years. I mean, when you put out an RFP, you know, you ask people to come. You're going through a process. The people came, the city council loaded four to one for CenterCal. That was five years ago. So I don't think it's like we need to slow down. I think we need to start moving forward again, because now we have five years, and if this doesn't get approved, what is it gonna do? It's just gonna, you know, begin kicking it, you know, to the future. And also, then anybody else who comes in, can I say, "Do you think that's gonna be approved?" No. The reality is that people don't, some people are using this to try to get their agenda of just having parkland. And so it's gonna be kicked to the future, and kicked to the future, and kicked to the future. And we're gonna have a waterfront that's dead. Thank you.
Okay, still ready?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Leslie Campeggi. Ms. Irvine just said that it's been five years. Yes, it has been five years. But I don't believe anybody's been championing for five years just to have nothing but parkland down at our harbor. It's also been five years, but there were eight public meetings and then a scoping meeting where the public gave significant input to CenterCal, overwhelming input to CenterCal, asking for things to be different and asking for compromise. At some of the city council meetings, some of that public was here saying, "Okay, this is great. They're listening, they're listening," only to have, at the very end, when the public opinion was stopped, to have CenterCal pull the bait and switch and not only change what the project was, but to increase it by its footprint. Five years is a long time. Five years is a long time to give an exclusive negotiating agreement to any one entity. I don't believe that was for a full five years. But to extend it for five, six times and come up with this kind of agreement is kind of appalling and tells us that I don't believe that we know what we're doing. Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure what you mean by gaming the system. Some people try to game the system to be the last speaker. What I would tell you is that there are people who do have a lot of information, who read, who know the facts, who take a lot of time to delve into this. And one of the reasons they wait to hear what some of other people have to say is to refute the soundbites that are coming forward, such as the soundbite from the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, who said that without this, if we don't go forward with CenterCal, we're gonna have to pay $200 million through taxes, through property taxes. Well, come on. We have to vote for our property taxes to be increased through some kind of a form of a bond measure, whatever that might be. You just don't all of a sudden say, "No, CenterCal, oop, your property taxes are going up and you owe $200 million." That's absurd. So why are we giving them $600,000 to $700,000 a year for their CEO to come up here and misrepresent the facts? I think that is just a horrible shame. What was presented to you guys to look at? What was really presented? The CenterCal project or Redondo Beach does it itself for a $200 million analysis report that had no basis in fact when it was queried as under a public records request? So that's a figure that shouldn't be used either. I don't think that you're gonna vote not to go ahead with the ALPIF, and I think that's an absolute shame. I think that you should, because there are other alternatives besides overbuild or do nothing. We already spent $52 million to pave the way for a $400 million mall by CenterCal. How about we keep that $52 million for ourselves? We own the project, and we come up with a better plan. There's something in between the two. Thank you.
Only once. Okay.
Sean Carroll, Area One.
What's your name?
I'm sorry. Sean Carroll.
Okay, thanks.
I came here, the first day I saw a sign, the posters out about rebuilding this area, the seascape over the Seaside Lagoon, and it said, "We're gonna block the view." The Seaside Lagoon blocks the view, and we're gonna open it up. And I looked at the picture, and they're side by side, and I was here and I asked them to put this back up. On one side, it must have been high tide, because the jetty is just barely visible. And then the picture, the new picture that they're gonna, did was, it was high tide. And then they showed the picture how it is. It was low tide, because the jetties were all five, six, 10 feet high. You couldn't see the ocean. And the reality is, it was not, it was not a true picture of what's happening. And today, I saw a sign that said, "No one see, no one knew taxes." And that's not true at all. There's no guarantee that our taxes, we're gonna have taxes, not mandatory. This council talks about what they want. There's not a person in the city that doesn't want to see the mall redone. I don't know how come it's been in disarray for so long, who hasn't, who's dropped the ball. But everybody in the city wants it redone. We talked about from Nob Hill, the street on Nob Hill, down to Catalina, a couple weeks back. And everyone said it was a great idea, a great job, perfect. But it's just a basic job. It's a facelift, and it was well done. And that's what the mall needs. The mall needs to be revitalized. It needs a new facelift, bring in some new restaurants, upgrade the whole property. You don't need to build this. And these people, if they walk, the contractors walk, there's a line of contractors probably out there to come up to do this project. It doesn't have to be, it's monstrosity. And I told you that if you go ahead and build this property, the other guy says it's gonna be a brown whale. I said, "It's gonna be a white whale sitting on the beach, and then next thing you know, we're gonna go, just like every other project they said, they're gonna go to residents to save that, save that mall. And you're gonna be selling condos on the beach, and then it'll be, just be a bad place." That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, who else?
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, CCC City Staff, people of Redondo Beach. Nils Narenheim, District One, official candidate for the District One seat. So tonight, we're putting our eggs into one basket, and unfortunately, that basket is not even ours. In the Cosmont report, we had $32.6 million worth of loans. We're now spending $3.7 million in interest on top of that. The loans are due $19 million and change on June 17th. We don't have enough to pay for that, so we're refinancing that. In the report, we don't have the refinancing interests and costs associated with that, or at least I didn't see that. What's happening tomorrow? Tomorrow, the CenterCal ALPIF, or the inclusive negotiating agreement, is expiring, as well as the AES agreement between the city is expiring for 52 acres of prime waterfront revitalization. So right up here, there should be a recommendation that says, number two, extend the, or let it expire, and maybe talk about other developers. Mr. Cosmont talked about a $400 million-plus project. First time we heard that, such a large number. Well, the Del Amo project just went through a $200 to $300 million project on one end. Now they're doing, talking about doing another project on the other end. Let's talk about that for a second. In 1962, $9 million as a bond was floated in the city of Redondo to build a great Marina, to rival Marina Del Rey's Marina. What happened a few years later? A paradigm shift to Del Amo. Why? In 1961, when Del Amo opened their mall, everyone went shopping at the mall, and we lost our commercial core in the Marina. Fast forward to today, we're trying to fix that problem by building a new commercial core, a mall, active lifestyle center, whatever you want to call that. Except, there's a paradigm shift happening now away from active lifestyle centers, malls, shopping centers. To put this into perspective, the promenade up in Palos Verdes Estates, you draw concentric circles around there, much larger incomes in around here. They were promised $1 million a year in annual tax revenues. They got a maximum of $415,000. They now get $250,000. That's a 370,000 square foot project. Our project is the size down here in the waterfront, the size of 15 King Kades, four Best Buys, plus a market hall, plus a hotel, plus office space. This Best Buys, by the way, 55,000 square feet average, square foot, about eight years ago, 10 years ago. Then it dropped to 45, then to 36. Now we're at 28,000 square feet for an average-sized Best Buy. So I really implore you guys to look at our cultural assets, like the Seaside Lagoon, other areas down there, that really draw the people. Our harbor has been here since over 100 years ago. Let's cherish that harbor. Let's build a great harbor. Let's build recreational aspects to that harbor and the coastal dependent uses. That's why we have Measure C.
Oh, sorry.
Project our Measure C.
We went way over.
Coastal dependent uses. Thank you. Yes on Measure C. Have a great night.
We're done. Eugene.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Staff. My name is Eugene Solomon. I live here in District Two. I'd like to talk about bacon and eggs. With bacon and eggs, you've got the eggs, the chicken, chickens involved. But with bacon, the pig, pig's committed. And that's what we find here, that a bunch of you have just been committed to this. You've been baking all along. Bacon, bacon, bacon. I'm not sure why Mr. Cosmont tells us that there's no information that he can release about Westport Capital, because it's easy to find. You go to the SEC, and there's a brochure for Westport Capital. I sent you all a link in a brochure this week. It had all of the funds that Westport Capital has. They're not debt financing. They're a hedge fund. They do strictly equity. Do they have a fund prepared and ready to launch for this? Is there a prospectus, a ready-to-go? Or are they gonna have to create one? Because that's where the money's coming from. They don't do debt financing. Here's something that's a quote from the Westport Capital brochure. "An investment fund, they are, in funded managed account entails a high degree of risk." They are a high degree of risk. This project is a high degree of risk. City government should not be investing funds in something that is a high degree of risk, more like moderate or low risk. Mr. Resnick brought up a couple of weeks ago about cap rates. So let's say you've got $32 million in leases you bought. Another $20 million in infrastructure, that's $50 million, 52, let's round it down. You're gonna get $250,000 in lease payments. That's a point, well, that's a 1.25 cap rate. Let's say you get a million bucks on your $50 million investment. That's a 2% cap rate. It's not until you get to around $3 or $4 million, you creep towards 5% or 6%. Bacon, bacon, bacon. You just committed to it, gonna make it work no matter what. Here's your projections. Now, it's funny how the city projections for average daily rate for hotels are so much lower than the projections for CenterCal, the CenterCal project. It's funny how the rate stabilization's so much lower on the city project. Bacon, bacon, bacon. Mr. Cosmont's been wrong on his projections before. Just asked the people in Hermosa Beach. No on oil. Measure O, he projected $100 a barrel was 50. Wrong, wrong, wrong. There's a straight line here, but there's no accounting for recessionary trends in the sales tax. Bacon, bacon, bacon. I just don't understand why you can't see the financials ahead of time. Why we're gonna throw our money into a hedge fund that they say is high-risk ahead of time. No sound investment ever starts where you don't know who your investor, who your fund is gonna be. You can't make a deal without knowing all about the money. Not after you sign it, and I know you're gonna say that you get a chance to review it all afterwards, but it's just bad business. People say it's not personal, it's business. It's bad business. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Wayne.
Councilman there, Wayne Craig, District One. I'm gonna go a little bit off-target on this one. Anyone here, raise your hand who wanted to live near a mall when they bought their house? Any of you up here? No. How many bought a house next to a freeway or a large, long line of traffic and said, "That's the house I want to buy"? I don't see any hands. Funny, when I talk to people, when I go door knocking, that's kind of what I hear, too. And also, I was gonna ask the developer, what studies are out there that actually shows living next to a 500,000-square-foot mall is gonna increase your property value? living next to a 500,000 square foot mall is going to increase your property value? That's crickets. It doesn't exist. These are some serious things that we really need to talk about our lifestyle. It's just going to change our thing forever. Well, 99 years' worth, which are probably for all of us in this room, is forever. There's a lot more options here that we can pursue. As I mentioned earlier, it isn't just this chunk of land here. This was developed solely because that's all that was available at the time. We have the AES plant, that's available, we're coming up now. We also have that other corridor. So we're talking close to 100 acres of prime oceanfront property that we could turn something and marvelous in here. I think, as Tip Neill said it best, you're entitled to your own opinions, but not your own facts. The fact's hard that this retail development is not going to be successful. Everything you see, I've seen indicates it, all the experts, apart from the ones that are hired by the city, do as well. We really need to do something better for the city that we could be proud of for the next 99 years. We have an opportunity here, don't squander it. Thank you. Yes on C?
Okay. Okay.
Betsy Morfield, District Two. I have a question and it's a question of ethics.
You're speaking in the microphone.
Sorry. My question deals with ethics. If this was a public hearing and the decision was not pre-made, the agenda would look very different. We have an exclusive negotiating period that comes to an end. It's not addressed as an option in the agenda. There is not a continuing option in the agenda. It says approve. As a citizen in Redondo Beach, I feel cheated and lied to. Because if you guys were coming out, and I don't know how staff could have prepared this report, how is it that this is an open discussion where you guys are going to make a decision based on anything anybody says here? If that was true, like any other matter that comes before the council, there would be a second option there. There would be a possibility of having a continuation. None of that is in your agenda. It says adopt. One of the things that happens when citizens, our input is ignored, is you give birth to public movements. There's a reason that there is a Measure C campaign. There is a reason that there is a row. It's all happened in the last couple of years and it all is a symptom of this city council not listening to its residents. What is it going to take for people to be heard? And maybe I should use better English. I want to be listened to, not just sitting there doing your head. When you listen to music, when you listen to an argument, you absorb the facts. You incorporate the argument of what's being said. When you are just sitting there hearing someone, it goes in one ear and out the other. And that's what's happened tonight. And you know what? Based on the agenda, we should have seen it coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Have you spoken? You've already spoken?
Have you spoken?
I have spoken, but she spoke before as well. I just have one short statement.
She spoke in public. You're done, sorry. The, yeah, remember, we had the public hearing was two weeks ago and then we carried it forward. And this is a staff recommendation. The city council can not adopt the staff recommendation if they choose. Okay, who hasn't spoken on this public hearing yet? That would like to?
Hello, my name is Josephine Herzina, District Three. I just came from a very special birthday dinner and it was over in Gardena. And I had my pen on. And I had a number of people then say to me, what is this about? And I started to tell them a little bit. And the astonishment of the people at this birthday dinner about what was being proposed to have a Centercal project at the waterfront, they were just, they couldn't believe that we would do that to our harbor and our pier. Now, these people are in Gardena, way over there. They had not heard much about this at all. Very little appears in our local Daily Breeze. They don't get the easy reader. So as I told them about this, they said, oh my gosh, you've got to be against that kind of project. And I said, yes, I am. And I said, part of the reason is when I became interested, when I retired, in our local politics, I began hearing about this and could not believe that this project was already underway without, with so little being told and made public. And the more I talked to people, the more I realized that many of the citizens of Redondo Beach are astounded when they hear the extent and the depth of this project. And they're saying, what can we do? And so I have been talking to a lot of people, telling them as much as I can. I don't have a lot of facts and figures to give you now. Alls I can say, in these past few years, I have met a group, a large and growing group of intelligent, committed, concerned people who are willing to get out there, volunteer. Nobody's paying any of us, to get out there, walk, knock, call, talk about, to say that we want yes on Measure C. We do not want the extent of this kind of project at our pier and our harbor. Revitalize, absolutely. Supersize, no way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I wasn't going to get up, Mr. Mayor, until I heard my name mentioned. As difficult as it is often to sit through all the acrimony that occurs at public hearings, I think it's also really a great testament to this city that everybody is here for the same fundamental reason. We're all here because we care about this city. And we're never going to get a large group of people in a city like this together, smart, intelligent, thinking, committed people who are going to agree on almost anything. This debate has not been going on for five years. It has not been going on for 10 years. It has been going on for all of the nearly 30 years that I have been involved in this city. And it has been the same debate. What are we going to do to solve the problems that come from decades of neglect and a lack of leadership to make a decision and make something happen? Who in here would speak poorly of Captain Monstad that built the pier nearly 100 years ago? Why would we possibly speak poorly of Fred and Jean Paul? Where else has anybody here been to listen or discuss a project and be able to speak to people on a first-name basis who are thinking of investing $400 million in their project, in their city? They didn't come to us, folks. We went to them. And what you are, what you have before you tonight is not a new project. It is the completion of a process that has been underway for a long, long time. Change is never easy. It's always a little scary, but it's always very dynamic. This project will not be the same in 10, 15, 20, 30 years as it is when it's completed in five or seven years. It will continue to respond to trends in the marketplace. And I have no doubt, because I've seen it so many times, that all the committed, caring, passionate people who are speaking on every side of this issue will come down and enjoy the new waterfront. I've seen it on, over and over again, that people speak passionately against a project and then you see them sitting there having a glass of wine and having dinner.